Okay, thank you. Well, hello and welcome to the regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, May 21st, 2019. We are at the Veterans Memorial Building. It's around 6:00 PM. And we're at 209 Surf Street, so come on down if you're interested. We have all members are present, so we have a quorum, so I'll call the meeting to order. Could we please observe a moment of silence? Please stand, face the flag, and pledge the allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty as its best, justice for all.
Everybody okay? Okay. So this is the time we have delegated for public comments. We usually allow this for items not on the agenda or for people who can't stay, so please come forward and stand here.
What about Planning Commissioners' announcements?
Oh, you are very right. I missed that point.
Should I go sit down or can I stand here?
We'll do that after the public comment. We've already opened that up, if that's all right.
Good evening, Commissioners and staff. My name is Carol Truesdale, and I'm standing before you this evening because I do not understand the resolution that is before you this evening, A2, on the property of 3300 Panorama, and I feel it should be pulled for certain reasons, and I gave you documentation on that reasoning, and I would really appreciate if you would pull that further, put it on agenda or something like that for the future, not waste the people's times here. That could be helped, okay? Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Anybody else wish to speak to public comment?
Carolyn Brinkman, resident of Morro Bay. Good evening, Commissioners and staff and anybody watching on TV. Recently, the City Council adopted four major goals that will guide the council and staff and commissions and boards in their work of governing the city. In one of the four goals, the city and council staff pledged to improve communication and community engagement. It was insightful of the council to see that communication is a two-way process, and to improve communication requires encouraging community engagement. The prior goal said, "improve communication to the community," and some of us were worried about that because it did not really indicate that it was a two-way process. I'm up here tonight to thank the people who have filed and fought for an appeal regarding the Panorama tank removal project and to laud them and those who have assisted them. They and the work they have done are models of community engagement. They have been involved from the very beginning of the Panorama process, from the planning stage to the present, researching, watching, visiting staff, testifying before the commission, and caring. This appeal has been a case of citizens willing to work tirelessly to engage with the city on an issue of critical importance, not just to the appallants but to their neighbors and the city as a whole. I'm in awe of the work they have done and their persistence in service to the community and all those who live near the Panorama project and to all of those of us who live in the city. I hope the community development department's staff and commission appreciate the effort these residents have made to protect their neighbors, all city residents, and the environment. I know that they wish to speak tonight on A2 on the consent agenda, which includes Resolution 0819. Please consider carefully what they have to say. They are working to improve community engagement. And again, I am stunned at the amount of work they have done on this and the research they have done and how much they know, and so I hope that you will listen to them appreciatively. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Minnie Goldberg, and I am a resident of Morro Bay since 1989. And I'm here to remind you of the mess they left when they went away. It's not fair to deny Morro Bay of a beautiful place where we stay, and you ought to know. Morro Bay is a bird sanctuary. We want to keep it clean. It's a rickery with peregrine falcons that are the fastest bird on the planet, or I should say galaxy. Morro Bay wants tourists, right? In order to really be a town that emulates what other beach communities want, let's be the forefront for them. We have birders and local sea enthusiasts and fishing port. You know, a lot of fishing goes on here. If you don't see trash, I will gladly hold your hand and take you up the dune right by the rock, and that's where it all blows over into. And then you'll see it all. I don't just talk the talk, I walk the walk. For instance, the last rainy day, I walked to the rock and the sand pails were on the beach. They were even bit in dumpsters, the little slot holes. Or come kayaking with me anytime to the sand spit. I have a double and a single. I pick up trash there for a long time. But before it gets there, it has to cross the bay. I wonder how many tons have gone out to the Pacific Ocean. I participated in a bay cleanup, and oh, boy, we hauled out everything, toilets to plastic tubes with crabs, and all these girls were screaming. It was funny. You're not going to get rid of me. As a result of what I am passionate about, I have a retorn meniscus and need knee surgery. Thank you, Morro Bay. It's not rocket science. Nobody in my whole 30 years here has said, "We need bocce ball." Nobody. I've spoken regarding trash cans back at the rock. Everybody that I talked to, every single person agrees, every single person. I've never heard anybody say, "We don't need them." They go, "Oh, why did they take them out?" And like, "Well, coulda, shoulda, woulda," you know? But I want to stay in the solution, and there's got to be a positive solution. Please and thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else wish to speak? Okay, I'll close public comment then. Scott, do you wish to have any comments on any of the items that came up?
I don't really have any comments about any of those items. I maybe spoke at the council meeting regarding the trash. Trash containers were removed a year or so ago, maybe from out there, might have been a little longer. One of the issues we had with trash cans out there, or the types of trash cans that we had out there, and then when they would fill up, you would put the trash next to it, and then it would blow out into the parking lot, into the water, and so that was one of the issues why some of the trash cans were removed. I know we're limited to trash service to six days a week. They don't get trash service on Sundays, so I know that was an issue, but really it's a public works issue and one that they've been looking at, so I don't really have much to add beyond that to the subject.
Okay, great. Okay, so we'll circle back here as soon as I miss the Planning Commissioners' announcements. Do we have any announcements from?
Just wanted to remind people that the community, I don't know what they're calling it now, Farmer's Market is back on Saturdays on Main Street and Morro Bay Boulevard. I think they are going to be increasing the amount of offerings with food. I know there's a new barbecue guy coming, and I forget their name, but I saw them posted on Facebook, and I know they were the ones who were at the Cayuga Seaglass Festival, so it's kind of a food truck option, but I know they're really good. And I think also Grandma's Yogurt in the gathering place, they're going to be having some live music this coming Saturday afternoon, hoping that it doesn't rain again. But I hope people start to come back for that because it's a great event, and it's building up again.
Okay. Michael?
Just wanted to remind people tomorrow at the Embassy Suites at 6:00, the federal agencies are taking comments on oil and gas leasing on federal properties in our central coast area, so please exercise your right to speak to them about that.
Anything from this side? Okay. Okay, great, thanks. Okay, so next item is Item A1, A2, and A3 on the consent calendar. Does anybody wish to pull any of these items?
I'd like to propose we pull A2 due to the nature of the scope of comments we've gotten on that.
Okay. Then I think what we'll do is, do we have a motion on approval of A1 and A3?
I'll move that we approve A1 and A3 on the consent calendar.
Second.
Second? Okay. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, seeing none, motion passes. Okay, taking A2, seems we have a resolution to approve. I think I will open this up for public comment at this point. Do we have anybody else that wish to speak to Item A2?
Good evening. I'm Cynthia Hawley, and I don't know if you've had time to read the report that was given to you, but there are some really serious flaws with the resolution in that it contains false information. It omits the commission's real action that was taken and makes up a false one and then makes findings based on the false action. I don't know if you realize that. I want to point out again that there's no such thing as major and minor modifications in the code. They're not mentioned at all. There's a minor modification in Title 16, in Chapter 16, but not in the zoning ordinance. There's no such thing, so there's no process for it, nothing. It's something that just grew on its own, I guess. And also, this resolution, like all the other documents, in this case does not mention asbestos. Once again, there's no mention of asbestos in the staff report. There's no mention of asbestos in the resolution. And the thing is that at the hearing, the commissioners were very frustrated that there was no adequate punishment for the property owner who defied the law, illegally removed dangerous, friable corrugated asbestos structures, and threatened the health and safety of the people in the area and the wildlife and wildlife habitat. But instead of punishment, this false action is drafted to legitimize and launder the property owner's egregious and life-threatening acts by allowing the owner to reapply to the Planning Commission for an amendment to the existing CUP/CDP for the work completed without a valid permit. That was nowhere in your motion. I transcribed the motion, and the language of it was, "I would like from Commissioner Barron, I would like to move that we uphold the appeal and require that the applicant reapply for the demolition of the pump house buildings as a separate permit." That was the motion. And then on that got added some comments about major modification, which doesn't exist. And also Commissioner Lawrence said that he wanted to investigate. He wanted to do an investigation of other structures outside, on the site for hazards. So neither of those show up in the resolution at all. The resolution makes up a different motion that wasn't said at the meeting, and the part about it that's worst is that pursuant to some laws, the Planning Commission recommends that the applicant should reapply to the Planning Commission for an amendment to the existing CUP/CDP for the work completed without a valid permit within 30 days. That was never part of the motion. And I want to reiterate that that false information in a public record document is a felony in California. It's a very serious crime, and I gave you some examples of case law in that, and I hope that you take it seriously because this resolution is full of false information and false documents. So I would like for you to set this aside and think about this, or maybe direct staff to write a resolution that reflects the motion that was taken. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm Carol Truesdale, and I'm grateful that the commission listened to our concerns, and I believe that the resolution needs to reflect. The actual words of the motion said that this does not happen again in any current or future applications or applicants wanting a permit. I think it needs to be really strict moving forward on anything like this, and thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else wish to speak to this item? No, okay. Thank you. I'll close public comment. Questions for staff?
I have a question. Sorry, did I interrupt?
No. Go ahead.
So my reaction in reading this was that we are telling the applicant that they no longer have a minor use permit, that they need to come back before the Planning Commission and basically apply for something they've already done. And at that point, it becomes a bigger deal. I don't know the terms for it, but it seems to me when we're all reviewing that as a board, that's the time where we can make demands. That's the time where we can make amendments to what they're asking for and say, "We would like you to come in and remove the rest of the asbestos sheds in a safe and monitored fashion. We want you to provide the reports," which I think some of that has been done, "but we want you to follow up with the scientific data and the reports." So I sort of, my reaction was feeling that this allows us to give them more than $100 or even $1,000 slap on the back of the hand. So is that accurate?
That's correct. The resolution is designed as, I believe that you wanted, that they would have their existing permit revoked, which it was ineffective anyway, and be required to come back for an after-the-fact permit through the Planning Commission as a discretionary process, and that is the process that will allow additional conditions. All of the other original conditions to the original permit would still apply, but you'd have the opportunity to add specific conditions.
And we did, and we are having the applicant evaluate the existing sheds on-site and provide us a report as to the status of those, you know, the status of the asbestos in those sheds and those types of things, so we'll have that for you when we come back too. And then we all require them to submit an application within 30 days. And if they didn't, then they'd be in violation of our municipal code because they don't have an active permit right now. We would go through a code enforcement process, and they chose not to, and we would start fining them $100 a day, $250, then $500 a day until they complied. But the applicants agreed to do the evaluation that we've requested, and we anticipated an application, right? So we'll be coming back, and they would be, you know, likely amending the existing permits that the Planning Commission has reviewed for the tank demo project.
Jesse?
Is it true that Title 16 doesn't talk about, and I don't know if that's the right title, but I mean, is it true that there is no minor or major modification within that
I think it's Title 17.
Okay.
We've been processing minor and major permits. They used to be called amendments. With our new software system, now they're called minor and major modifications.
Yeah, and then it's the existing permits.
So it's just a mechanism, wording change to a mechanism to amend an existing?
Correct. So the choice is you either have whole new standalone permits out here, or you have amendments to existing ones. Amendments to existing ones are nicer because it creates the trail, right? Everything's connected, and you can look back and see what was done before, and then you, you know, change them as you move forward. So I mean, that's kind of the process and the practice the city's followed.
So translating this to the public, so basically the wording may have changed to amend a permit, but I mean, the mechanism may have changed to a new software system, but the process is by and large the same, is what I'm gathering, so.
You can amend permits, so.
Right. Well, the question that seemed like from Ms. Hawley was that that wasn't part of the ordinance, but it sounds like it always has been, it's just maybe the mechanism, language has changed, which is maybe some part of the confusion, so just clarifying for public, yeah.
Again, that's part of my concern. Obviously, I remember the people in the audience have gone through a great deal of trouble to assemble these documents, but I don't know what to make of these documents. I mean, there's a very serious charge of false information contained in the resolution. There's a suggestion that the amended permit was done without authority, and I believe it was done with authority, but it strikes me that we should address some of this in some fashion rather than just saying.
Well, I mean, the resolution was reviewed by the city attorney's office, and the city attorney is comfortable with the language that's in here.
Was he also able to look at some of these?
And he helped draft the language that's in the resolution, so I mean, it went through our legal counsel.
Was he able to see these documents that I just recently given?
I think we just received those.
You did?
We just received those, so it wasn't part of the process.
Okay. Michael?
Scott, during the testimony last time, you said that a number of things had been required of the applicant subsequent to this being discovered. None of those things are listed here, so that's not part of our motion, but it's part of the record because it was part of the testimony that those things will be executed, correct? In other words, this addresses the fact that there needs to be a permit, but this doesn't address any redress to identify impacts of the non-permitted work that you were talking about, things like the testing around the site for?
Most of the testing and the additional reports that we had asked for, they voluntarily did. We have them in hand, so they don't need to be a condition of this permit because they exist. This new permit process will allow you to create new conditions, such as last time you had mentioned investigating the one existing building that appears to be the same materials as the ones removed, to find out for sure what the status of that building is. That is a condition that can be added with this new major modification or amended permit.
And we'll also bring back, we'll bring forward the reports that we received from them as part of that review process. This resolution that's in front of you on consent is really to kill that permit process, and then you can't compel people to submit things to you. You don't have that authority, but because they did work, they are in violation of the city's municipal code, and we can't. So we put the suggested language in there for the 30 days, and that's what we're following through it because that's the process. If you hadn't done that or requested that, that I would have done anyway, because you have to have a permit for the work that's done. And what we're doing with this resolution is the Planning Commission is finding that while it might have been acceptable underneath the original permit application for the modification to go through a staff-level permit because they did the work without having an effective permit, that now that raises the level now to the Planning Commission because it raises these issues related to the other reports that we had done, and you need to see those in order to make a determination as to the, you know, the project that would be before you for the demolition of the shed. So that was the kind of reasoning we put in here for raising that level and having them come back with an amended permit that goes to the Planning Commission level. And that was the request that the Planning Commission made of me, was to document that in the finding that the administrative process was correct, but that the applicant in exceeding, you know, or not following the process and looking forward without an effective permit now raises it to Planning Commission review level because there are these other reports that we have that might generate additional conditions on the project based on the results of those reports. And then you ask for some additional information related to the existing shed, and we're going to get that too, so.
So Scott, I'm sorry.
I just, so the future staff report that we'll get when the permit comes in for review will include the staff's analysis of those pieces that were required following the last action?
Absolutely. Yes.
And that'll be there as evidence for the community to see if there was any suggestion of contamination off-site, things like that?
Correct.
And you're satisfied based on all the actions that happened at the last hearing that the things that were suggested or were requested were satisfactory to do that from the city's point of view? In other words, the testing that you had done off-site and things like that were satisfactory to you after we had the hearing last time in terms of the things you had asked them to do, you deemed adequate to prove?
To address, yeah, to address the concerns that were raised, yes.
The community was safe from the violation.
Yeah.
And then the one piece that came in correspondence to us that's not here, maybe it is, they were saying the applicant actually used a different identifier as opposed to the corporate identifier. They used personal identifiers on the application that's been voided. Is that true?
No, and people have to sign, so it still was Morro 94 LLC and Ryan LP.
So the applicant's corporate identity is still intact in terms of the way you interpret all the documents?
Yes, that's the official owner of the property.
That's all I have.
Okay.
To that end, would the city require some sort of articles of incorporation to verify the officers of that organization for signatures on the permit?
We did that a couple of years ago.
Okay, and those are available to the public, I assume?
Yes.
So Scott, so what I see is the actions that we may take tonight regarding this resolution is we can approve the resolution. We could ask for a continuation on the resolution to have it, you know, either reconfirmed or to be reviewed by our staff attorney in regard to this with direction, continue with direction to staff to review it with the city attorney with regard to the new information that we have that I haven't had the chance to really read yet, or we can deny it. If we deny the resolution, what would that do to?
You don't deny the resolution. You either want us to do something else with it or you adopt it.
Yeah.
I mean, you amend it, you adopt it, or you direct me to do something with it. The action in what the resolution is doing is very straightforward. We had a permit application in front of us. We took a process and approved it. That process and that permit was appealed. The Planning Commission upheld that. That's what this resolution says.
Right.
The Planning Commission can't compel folks to submit applications on other things, you know, so which is why the language is kind of suggested in there, because that's about as good as we can get. But we do because they have permits. They did work without the permits. We can go and require them to get after-the-fact permits, which is what we're doing, and that was my, and the city attorney's best shot at acknowledgement of that fact. The rest of this stuff doesn't really relate it to the permit. I mean, I just, I don't, this is what happened, and if you think that's not the direction that you took, then please tell me that, because I'd be happy to do something else. But if you think that's the action that you took and you think that's the appropriate action, then there's nothing else that we really need to do. And again, we'll be reviewing this as a future application, one way or another.
Okay. Any further questions or any discussion now? Sure.
So just for the record, I mean, I'm reading Section 2 Action, and I'm going to skip down a couple of sentences, but pursuant to condition of approval number three of Resolution Number PC 15-18, the Morro Bay Municipal Code, Section 17-15-120, the Planning Commission recommends that the applicant should reapply. So I mean, to me, that's very clear on what the action the commission requested and what staff, and what this resolution states. I mean, there's a lot of verbiage in front of that, but that's the action we're taking today. So I just want to make that clear, and I agree that the resolution was properly worded. clear, and I agree that the resolution was properly worded, and I understand some of your concerns, and I agree with some of them, but at the end of the day, I feel that the motion I made, this addresses the motion I made, so.
Okay. Further discussion?
I do feel like this gives the public opportunity again to come forward in front of the applicant, hopefully, that they show up, or at least their representatives, and state your anger and frustration, and it does give us the opportunity to make it hurt more. And I'm sorry to put it that way, because I know that's not very professional, but I've been in situations like this where people sort of step outside of what they're supposed to be doing because they think they might get away with it, and they got caught. And so I feel like it's real appropriate for it to come back to us in a bigger way, and that, you know, we have the opportunity to say, well, now you did this. We're going to require more. So that's my feeling.
Michael?
Yeah, my biggest concern is that I do think there's a lot of language in some of the pieces given to us that I think exceeds our capacity to dictate some of those terms. But I do think in D somewhere, I think perhaps in the sentence where it says, moreover, since the applicant performed all the proposed work without valid permits, I think something like including removal of hazardous materials and lack of testing, and with lack of validation through testing. You know, there's something in there that I do think, it sounds like they took out a doghouse here, and it wasn't. It was hazardous materials that we have no verification of, aside from, you know, materials that were looked at days and weeks later, instead of during the process of the action. So I think D is something I would propose, that we put some more descriptors in there of lack of environmental testing and hazardous materials.
I'm not sure that that's true. It was a qualified licensed federally and state firm that did the work. Granted, they did the work without permits, and they're dealing with Slow County Environmental Health to provide them the evidence that it was non-fiable material in the sheds and that it was properly removed. I just would be concerned about just picking a word to put in here that might be?
We're not contesting that it was hazardous material.
No, we're not.
Okay. I'd say we need to have hazardous material without valid permits or processes.
To me, the action to quash the permit is key here, and I think that since we're doing that, I mean, yeah, it matters what's in the resolution, but at the end of the day, you know, where we are with the process is of the most importance. And requiring that they reapply and come before the public, and I'm sure they're going to hear very strongly worded comments from every member of this commission, so, if not written comments to that effect. So I mean, that to me is where I lie, that we're quashing it.
That's essentially my thoughts as well, and I'm looking closely at the summary here of the four fundamental flaws in this memo of sorts. And these are arguments, they're not facts, they're arguments that are more persuasive or less persuasive, but I think we could examine those arguments again when the applicant comes before us to seek this new permit. And so I'm satisfied that the core meaning was, we want a new permit, and we want this applicant to come before us and explain his behavior, and then we're going to try to impose some additional safeguards. And I think at that time, we can address what these, we can address these potentially fundamental flaws and examine whether they really are flaws, and if they are flaws, what we should do about them. Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'll move that the commission approve Resolution 8-19, reflecting planning commission's decision to uphold appeal of minor, M-I-N-19-001, for the project of 3300 Panorama.
Second?
I will second that motion.
Okay, any further discussion on motion in the second?
Okay. I just think, again, without some kind of additional descriptor in D, where any type of procedural piece without permits is potentially, it's already in violation, but the nature of why this has gathered so much interest is because of the nature of the actions taken with the nature of the materials that were there. We wouldn't be doing this if it was a wooden fence.
Michael, I think my comment on that might be, the more descriptors we put in, the less that allows us to arrange conditions that come before us later. I don't think, you know, at this point, we have more latitude to apply conditions to the previous, to the subsequent permit. So that's why I would let it go through as it is, because I don't think we're going to forget that it was, that there was hazardous material on site. But do you want to, are you pushing for an amendment to the motion?
Well, all I was going to say is that, as I proposed before, in Section D, include a portion of a sentence including hazardous materials and processes.
Okay.
Because that doesn't say it's exclusively hazardous materials, but it says that part of those actions included removal of hazardous materials.
Okay, any discussion on that?
No, I will agree with that. I think that behavior was serious enough that, yeah, I would like to see some mention of it, and I don't think it limits our discretion or decision-making at future meetings. I would agree with Michael.
Okay.
I agree with Michael. In theory, I'm hesitant to put that in the resolution in that I don't have the reports in front of me. I agree that 99.9999% chance that there was hazardous material in those sheds. However, without the report in front of me, I can't definitively say there is, therefore, I can't definitively say it should be a part of the resolution, therefore, therefore.
Okay, Susan? Okay, you don't have to comment on that? So Scott, let me ask Scott, you know, on that, by including a mention of hazardous material, and that, will that limit our opportunity to, does that reduce the potential for us to condition the project to said hazardous materials, or?
No, I mean, the project will come for you, it'll either be an amendment to the original permit, or it could be a standalone CDP, I suppose, but you'll have full authority as it relates to that. This doesn't have any validity bearing on that. I mean, it'll be, you know, it'll be a paragraph in the staff report that says?
Right.
This is the process, you know, the background will include all, you know, what we did with the original project, when it was approved, timelines, and then it'll have this in here and this action that the planning commission took, and it'll?
What do you see as a negative point for including hazardous material in that paragraph? The wording that Michael was suggesting?
If you don't mind me making a comment, for people in the industry, those terms mean something different. For example, non-fiable asbestos goes to a waste site, and friable goes to hazardous waste site. There's different handling procedures and different processes. And I'm not an expert, but without knowing exactly what terminology we put in here and whether we really know that that's what it was or not, I would be hesitant.
If we said something like including materials under review as potential hazardous waste?
I mean, we could just say asbestos period.
Potential asbestos, okay.
I mean, that's the material we're talking about. Calling it hazardous, you know, waste or whatever you want to call it, but I mean, it's asbestos. That's what we're talking about. We can say that if you want.
Okay, would you consider amending your motion then?
So if it's helpful, sure. I just want to make sure that we're not?
Right.
If we just amended to say what we're talking about, then I don't have really a problem with it because that's factual. It doesn't raise the issue that Nancy raised, because we're a little unsure right now because of, was it friable, was it not? But it is asbestos, we know that. And there are special handling requirements typically for that, so I think that's sufficient. I mean, I think that gets at the heart of it if Commissioner Lucas is willing to change the language.
Is that what, you, Michael?
I think it's fine. I just find it shocking that we were told in testimony last meeting that things that were removed were removed in a manner consistent with there being hazardous waste, and now we're saying potentially it wasn't hazardous waste?
I think, again, that's the industry vernacular. It was asbestos, and it was painted with lead-based paint, but there's a different terminology and a different disposal and handling system to people in that industry, based on whether it's friable or non-fiable. And again, I'm not an expert. I learned an awful lot in the last month.
Mr. Lucas, what would you oppose?
I'm satisfied if we say asbestos. I don't want to, I'm not an expert either.
Where would you put the asbestos?
I would say, moreover, since the applicant performed all of the proposed work, including removal of asbestos off-site without valid permits.
May I amend my motion to include Commissioner Lucas's language?
You can, somebody, the second has to.
Do we concur on the second? I forgot who seconded it. Joseph?
Yes, I concur for the amendment.
Okay, let's call the question.
Commissioner Lucas?
Hi.
Commissioner Stewart?
Hi.
Commissioner Brown?
Hi.
Commissioner Graffia?
Hi.
Chair Lord?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next item is Item B1, Case Number CUP-19-03, CDP-19-006, and it's the site location at 495 Tascadero Road in Morel Bay. Do we have a staff report ready? Do we have any expertise communications?
So what we're reviewing tonight is application for conditional use permit, CUP-1903, and coastal development permit 19-006, and the project is an after-the-fact permit request for a maintenance building.
Does it turn on?
We're having technical difficulties. Oh, so it makes a difference if it's turned on?
Yeah.
Who knew? The site history is, this is cutting off a part of my slide, but site history is, the location was used as a mobile home park, and it predates City Incorporated. The property owner got a permit from Housing and Community Development to build the maintenance building in 2014. The maintenance building is a steel building. It's 24 by 33, just under 23 feet in height, located in a former mobile home space. So they removed one of the mobile homes and used that area to put the maintenance building. The building was built with an HCD permit, as I mentioned before. It was completed in 2015. It was used for the owner's storage and workshop. It does not generate any income to the owner. The part at the top that you can't see is the picture on the left is the lower level, and the picture on the right is the upper level. If you can see any of the detail, it's a very high-quality steel constructed building. After-the-fact permit process. It requires an application and fees for required permits, in this case, a CUP and a CDP. Staff reviews and considers all zoning criteria and development standards. Comments and conditions can be limited because the building is existing. All right, this is missing a little more at the top. State of California Housing and Community Development, which is HCD, their jurisdiction over mobile home parks is the building permit, they are in charge of building permits for permanent buildings and setbacks for mobile homes. The city's jurisdiction over mobile home parks is site density, site use, and development standards related to permanent structures on the site. In 2014, the owners asked HCD if they needed any other permits to build the maintenance building. They were told the building permit was all that they needed. Missing, oh, the front setback's not that important in this case, city development standards. So this is a dual zone. It's a C1 and a C2 zone, and it's, as I mentioned, a mobile home park. This compares the standards for front setback, side yard, rear, and height. And the only one that, on the far right column, which at the top, if you could see, it would say shed placement, is the shed placement on the side yard setback is three feet and two inches from the property line. The building, this shows the building at the Easterly property line, which exceeds the HCD setback requirement for mobile homes, which is what was told to the owner when they were applying for the permit. The dual zoning allows for a zero-foot setback in less adjacent to residential district. What the dual zoning ordinance does not say is it doesn't clarify what the setback would be if it's next to a residential district, and in some cases, other sections of the zoning code will clarify that. It applies if it's next to a residential district other than R4, or it would adopt the same standards as the residential district that it's next to. In this case, it's silent. It just says it's not zero if it's next to a residential district. The adjacent property is a fully developed R4 condo development, which is high-density residential. It also allows hotels, professional office, which really has characteristics more of commercial than residential. The requirement of the setback standard is not clear, as I mentioned in the ordinance, but in this case, both actual uses are residential, and the maintenance and storage building is a passive commercial use, in that there's no activity that takes place in there. It's not loud. It doesn't have a lot of visitors. As such, it's staff's opinion that the existing setback of three feet, two inches meets the requirement and intent of the C1, C2, side yard setback standard. This is nothing. We're back. We still are missing the top, but this is a view of Rockview Street, which is north of the site. The mobile home park does not have access to this, either pedestrian or vehicular. Public Works had added a condition, which is in the resolution, for street improvements to Rockview Street, but since the time that the staff report was sent to you, they've determined that the new storage shed is considered a residential use by the property owner and not subject to street improvement requirements. So staff recommends if you adopt the resolution that you exclude Public Works Conditions Number 2 and 3. And staff recommends approval for CUP-1903, CDP-19006, to allow the existing maintenance building pursuant to findings and conditions excluding Public Works Condition 2 and 3, included in the Planning Commission Resolution 10-19.
Okay, any questions for staff?
I have a question. This strikes me as the second time that issue like this has arisen, even in my short duration as a planning commissioner. as a planning commissioner. And I would imagine that all the municipalities have the same issue when they're dealing with this Department of Housing and Community Development. Is there an asterisk in their software that says, "Oh, by the way, applicant, you should check with the local municipality before you assume the assurance that you've done everything you're supposed to do"?
It's a really sore point for me. I've been dealing with the same folks at Housing and Community Development for 20 years, and they really just don't care. I mean, I can't be more blunt than that. I mean, they literally... At Silver City, they were allowed an expansion of that site. It wasn't even taking buildings out and putting new ones in. It was an expansion of the use there that included 12 or 10 new spaces. And that never came through the city. We had to do it after the fact and we stopped work. And it wasn't even the owner's fault. You know, like, they were in construction, excavated, putting the infrastructure in, connections to sewer and water, the whole nine yards. We're like, hey, HCD doesn't get to tell you, you know, that you can expand your park. That's a use issue solely within the discretion of the city, you know? And we got them on the phone, and they're like, eh, go be it. I mean, it's the same thing with this owner and this applicant. They didn't do anything on purpose. You know, they went through the process. They thought they were following all the rules. And then, you know, they came in and asked us, how did we end up following up on this? What was it from?
I'm not sure how it originated, but one of the planners, I think, either noticed the building or they came in and asked him questions.
I think they might have came in and talked to us about something and, you know, then we looked at the property and saw that and we're like, what is that? And it wasn't anything that we ever permitted. So it requires a coastal development permit. That's why we're sitting here. And then you have the added benefit of having that C1/C2 zoning with what's the setback supposed to be game we have to play. I apologize for that. The new draft zoning code doesn't do that. But here we sit. Again, that's kind of the scoop at this point.
Jesse?
I have a ton of questions. Okay. So first and foremost, I agree with the HCD apathy, for lack of a better word. My understanding, in my experience, anything stick-built, anything not factory-constructed under Title 25 is the jurisdiction of the municipality in which it was built.
So accessory structures in a mobile home park, actually, that doesn't go through the Building Department at the city... I mean, the county may have different standards, but for the City of Moray Bay, we don't. And so they have jurisdiction over those as far as the building permit process goes. They don't come to us for building permits. But we have the coastal development permitting process where we determine, one, as Nancy indicated, use, what's going on, what's the use of the structure. And then we have setback requirements. They have to comply with it for fixed structures. And so you have to get that coastal development permit from us. You know, we have our LCP, Local Coastal Program. It's our implementation of the Coastal Act. And so it puts us on at least equal footing with the State Department of Housing and Community Development. They've argued not being required to provide other sort of permits, like conditional use permits and things like that, but we can require coastal development permits.
Okay. So full circle back again. I don't believe the Department of Housing and Community Development has the authority to enforce Title 24 within a jurisdiction. So we do do it differently in a different jurisdiction. And in a differing jurisdiction, I've also done it the same way. So, I mean, I'm wondering if it's not explicitly ceded, if jurisdiction is not specifically ceded to HCD and mobile home parks in the general plan or in Title, whatever the building code falls under here? I'm not sure what it is.
Yeah. So there, any sort of fixed structure, stick-built structure, what have you, in these parks is under the authority of HCD. So it doesn't come through us.
But, I mean, how are we determining that?
But coastal development, I mean, because that's the law. I mean, we don't have... If you can have an ordinance that does something else and you can take on some of that authority as a municipality. The City of Moray Bay didn't do that. I was in Pismo. Pismo didn't do that. And so we would issue coastal development permits inside the mobile home parks for bathroom facilities. I can remember doing it for an expansion of their... One of the gathering areas they had in one of the parks in Pismo, anyway. And they came through us, got the coastal development permit, and then we never saw it again. You know, which is one of the things that's kind of tricky because you have conditions that they have to comply with. And, you know, sometimes it's related to setbacks. Sometimes it's related to floor area, height, those types of things. And we had to catch them while it was under construction and make sure they adhered to the requirements because the owner is still subject. They signed the conditions of approval saying they will comply with them.
Well, what I'm specifically concerned about is occupancy of this building. So, I mean, it looks an awful lot like it's kind of like a F2 type of building where you're, you know, maybe even having like a woodshop-type situation going on. That close, three foot six off the property line, I'm not sure if it's sprinkled. I mean, I have a lot of concerns immediately about the occupancy, about the setbacks, about how we're not requiring... Well, so any lessening of a setback requirement for me, I couldn't support that unless I had some very clear identifications on what the occupancy was, whether it was a sprinkled building. And I don't understand how we're going to call it a residential building when it's clearly serving a commercial purpose. I mean, whether or not it's... If it's not an accessory structure to one of those mobile homes, it's not a residential use, it's a commercial use.
The owner has... There's a residence that's on there, a fixed residence on a mobile home, and this is in association with that and I believe used that way. It's not used in support of the overall facility. Is that correct?
Yeah. I walked through it. I mean, it's the owner's that storage upstairs. It's not rent-a-storage space for the residents in the park. That's my understanding.
Right. But, I mean, a U occupancy in a residential accessory structure would be in a garage-type situation, not a commercial enterprise where you're maintaining tools and equipment that would be used to maintain an entire park, which would be more in line of a commercial use. Maybe even an F2 type of occupancy, which would be clearly sprinkled and clearly 10 feet away. I'm a little concerned about all these things, specifically the setback.
And so we're not suggesting that they not meet setback requirements. We just don't have a setback requirement. So setback requirement here isn't related to building code because we don't have that authority here. Setback requirement is as it's related to our current, our existing codes, and there's not a standard in it. You know, with the C1, C2 thing, it's kind of fuzzy and it's a little bit of create-your-own-adventure. We, I mean, sort of feel a little bit bad for the applicant being caught in this scenario because I've seen it happen before. HCD takes them down this road and then we're left sort of picking up the pieces at the end. So I don't know what to say beyond that.
Yeah. Any other questions?
I guess one of the things that I'm curious about is when we have mobile home park, that sort of implies one-level, pre-manufactured structures. So I know this is the second one. We had a really nice, small project that was multi-story down on Main Street, North Main, that I see they've put some other two-story structures in there, too. So I guess to me, the thing that I'm always concerned about is what was reasonable for the neighbors to assume was going to be in this site when they built whatever they were going to build next door? And so to me, the biggest surprise here is that you can put a two-story building inside a mobile home park with zero lot lines, which is really kind of scary. So that's just a question. We don't have anything about not building two stories inside something that's a mobile... We could have one mobile home unit and 99 stick-built buildings that are two stories inside a mobile home park, in theory.
I guess that, again, raises the use issue, which gets us in the door, right? This one's clearly a mobile home park. That's the use that's there. It's the use that's been here before. It predates, as Nancy indicated, you know, City Incorporated. I think if you were doing something along the lines of what you said, then I would be questioning the use that they're doing, and that might change... I mean, HCD might think that's the case, but, I mean, we might have an argument to the contrary.
I guess the other thing I'm really curious about, and again, it's done, but if I look at their 1.2 on here, which is their site plan, quote-unquote, it's got 10 feet. So they have a site plan... Now, we're kicking around poor HCD, but if HCD looked at this and says, well, it's 10 feet around this building. So somehow this thing didn't get put in according to the site plan on 1.2. I may be reading this wrong because I can't read with my bad eyes and even my good glasses what the demarcation is of the little extension on the bottom part of the site plan. But I don't think that's part of the building. I think that's a pad.
The site plan that I'm looking at shows three feet on each side on 1.2.
Oh, this is not the scale then. Oh, they're all three feet. I'm sorry. That's my glasses. But even then, we don't have... We're zero, right?
Three feet, two inches.
We're three feet, two inches. I also concur with Commissioner Barone that this is a pretty hefty, big structure here with a lot of potentially changing uses inside. I didn't see if it was sprinkled from the images that you had there. Is it sprinkled?
The applicant is here.
Okay. Maybe I'd like to ask that.
Okay. That's a good question. Susan? Joseph?
Not this time, no.
Okay. So what I'm seeing is applicable building codes. They're talking about Title 24. They're talking about California Energy Code. They're talking about, you know, California Residential Code. Even these are 2013s, although we're in 2016 codes nowadays. So what I'm wondering, is this building heated? Is it... Do we have performance standards on it? Do we have a Title 24 report?
All preempted.
All preempted for us?
All preempted. We don't have a say. You could add the conditions and they would be ineffective.
So what about sprinklers?
Also preempted.
So we have no...
We don't have the authority to go in there and make them do anything. And the city could take some authority for those types of things if it wanted to. The city hasn't, to this point, done that. And that would be in the form of an ordinance. You can... I mean, local jurisdictions can inspect everything that goes into a mobile home park and just cut HCD out if they want.
Yeah.
You know, and some jurisdictions do that, but a lot don't. And some will take authority for certain pieces of it as well. Moray Bay has not done that.
Where do we stand on our new, you know, GPLCP on that? Do we have... Are we taking authority on site-built construction? Or are we ceding that authority in our new?
We don't change the... We don't change that as it relates to mobile home parks. I mean, you have to have special certifications to do the inspection of mobile homes, right? Isn't that correct?
What I'm thinking of, you know, just for future, and this is probably more of a comment, but just, I think we should reevaluate our new LCP GP to allow inspections on site-built projects, on manufactured-built projects, manufactured-built structures, then cede the inspection to HCP or which?
HCD, Housing and Community Development.
Yeah. So I think that's a note we should put for our new general plan update.
We'll do some research. I'm happy to do that.
Okay. And then... May I ask one more question? Okay, yeah. There was another question. Okay. So, but what we're talking about, too, there was a one-story, two-story restriction if it was adjacent to a residential site?
There's no issue with the height.
There's no issue with the height?
No. The building's under the height allowed in that zone.
It's under the height allowed in that zone, but wasn't there a... If it was adjacent to a residential, within 20 feet of a residential... If it's adjacent to a residential zone...
It's under both of those requirements.
Then there was a single-story restriction on it?
No.
Okay. So I read that wrong, then?
I mean, I think I used that also as one of the examples of the zoning code requirement and then the exception based on what residential. In this case, this building does not have any issue with however that is read, related to the height.
Okay. Jesse? Joseph?
So did I hear correctly, though, that a municipality could take back some authority in either inspection or some requirement? And might that not trigger then the applicant knowing that he has to go to the city office as well as to...
Yeah. If you took authority for the entirety of a park, then somebody would... Somebody might contact... I mean, somebody in the park wants to do something in addition, work on the, you know, whatever it is, that would normally trigger an inspection by HCD inspectors, but that park wouldn't be part of their jurisdiction. And so they would just push them back on, hey, you need to go talk to the city if the city were to do something along those lines.
So that's really... I'm looking not so much at this situation, but as a way to prevent it in the future. And I haven't come up with or heard a solution yet.
Yeah. I mean, we had the same issue in the mobile home park with the two-story building that's on North Main that we had a couple of years ago, was sitting out there, you know, with the Tyvek wrapped around the outside of it, blowing in the breeze for a while. We worked our way through HCD. And that was with through HCD, the state's attorney's office, with our attorneys on the phone going back and forth, and Coastal's, Coastal Commission's attorneys on the phone. It was a fun conversation. And there's, unfortunately, in this instance, no bright line. There's... So it was a kind of a difficult problem, although they conceded to go through our process.
Jesse?
One more question. So we did not... And I would hope Chief Knuckles didn't cede fire authority to the mobile home park. So Chief Knuckles still would have the authority to require sprinklers in this building regardless of HCD's jurisdiction or not? Am I incorrect in that?
I don't believe so, but I'd have to go talk to them.
I believe the fire code is still under the jurisdiction of the fire marshal of that jurisdiction, which would be...
I'd have to go research.
City Fire or Cal Fire. I mean, it wouldn't be HCD, that is for sure.
I'd have to go research.
Okay. So, I mean, I don't think we've lost the ability to require sprinklers in this building at this point, I don't believe. So maybe we can... Well, anyway.
Okay. Then one other point I had. We had mentioned on one of those previous projects that we were, you know, we were asking for a notification to all the park owners that we were involved in the loop. Did that notification ever go out?
So when we talked with the HCD... I mean, we had an extensive conversation with HCD, their attorneys, Coastal Commission, their attorney, our attorney, about all of that. HCD said, okay... Well, we had a process when I was in Pismo where they would say, hey, you need to go... One of the things that they had conveniently forgotten is that we had two parks that sent a floodplain. And so what we weren't preempted for was enforcement of our floodplain ordinance. And they weren't complying with it. And so they had a process where they would say, oh, and you need to go talk to the city if you're in this park to go get your floodzone certification. And so they would go do that. I brought that up when we were dealing with that other project, and they said, okay, well, we'll make sure that we, you know, tell folks... And the package of material they handed to them might have had something in that that said, you also need to get, you know, some blanket statement, you need to get all other associated permits. They might have had something like that, but it certainly...
But we, as a community development office, have we sent out notifications to each of the park owners stating that in future this needs to be done?
Have not.
Okay. I think it'd be a handy notification. Okay. Any further questions for staff? Okay. At this point, I'll open up for public comment with the applicant. Please step forward.
I'm Andrew Ruben Morales, and I have RPM Consulting. And Mr. Graves, the owner of this particular project, contacted me to see if I could assist him in obtaining permits. Prior to doing consulting, I actually worked for HCD for 35 years.
You're the one.
And I retired here in San Luis Obispo because my geographical area encompassed Santa Barbara and San Luis Obispo County. But anyways, just to give you an idea, I knew the protocol for obtaining a permit. And I contacted the plan checker in Riverside because all permits are issued from the HCD office in Riverside. And I asked him, you know, this is what my client wants to do. We have the plans. It's a pre-engineered building. We'd like to submit for a permit. But prior to running all the way down, because we were going to hand-carry him, I asked him, do we need to get something in writing from the city prior to submitting the application? The plan checker, Mr. Larry Hemming, says, no. He says, is there any impact on the existing lot? I said, there's no impact. I said, we're removing the mobile home and putting a metal building on the place, and this will be the park maintenance building. He says, no. We'll do it all in-house. You don't... You don't need anything from the city. I said, well, I just wanted to make sure, because we don't want to run all the way down there and then have you tell us, you got to get something from the city. And I know that, having worked for the department for 35 years, including Pismo Beach. Our department was requiring that they obtained certifications after it was brought up, because that was a floodplain zone all along Bolivar, on both sides. And, and the last development, and I think you may have been there, when they, Pismo Coast, not Pismo Coast, right across from Pismo Coast Village, there's a park that had 40 spaces. They put in all brand-new park models in there, and that was addressed on every single one of those. But anyways, going back to Mr. Griggs, I have some information here that I've obtained and I'd like to give you, and it'll shed some light on, on the requirements for this building. And then also, I'm including the NFO bulletin that was sent out to all city agencies, county and, and city, in April of 21st of 2008. And you can review this. And one of them tells you what the setback is for a metal building. The other thing I wanted to say was, the process for the city to take over parks, when I was working here, the city took over the parks. Bill George, who used to be the inspector here at that time, Bill told me, I don't want these parks, I don't have the manpower to do these inspections. I said, you're going to have to talk to your board, they're the ones that made the decision, all because I was after one person for doing work with no permit. And that person happened to sit on the board, and he convinced the board it was a money-making proposition, we need to take over these parks. And you did. But you didn't keep them very long, because they were supposed to be park maintenance inspections that were supposed to be done every two years. You just didn't have the manpower. I can't remember the fire chief's name at that time, oh, Bernie, Bernie Zar, said, Reuben, we're going to train our fire, our firefighters to become inspectors to go out and do park maintenance inspections. And I actually went over there and did a little mini-training seminar on how to do park maintenance inspections. That didn't last very long. And then, next thing you know, the city says, we don't want the parks anymore, come over and pick up the files. Well, I actually brought them to them originally, and I picked them up. So, I know that the city has, has actually attempted to take over the parks, but you know what? Maybe you have the manpower to do it now. All you have to do is go into Title 25, Chapter 2, and it tells you exactly what you need to do to assume jurisdiction over the parks. And you can do it. The state will give any city or county the jurisdiction of the parks if you want them. This way, you can regulate everything, and then there won't be a problem in the future of somebody dropping the ball. In this particular case, we did exactly what we were told. They said that they would do it all in-house, but because there was no impact of the building being put on an existing lot, it was all being done in-house. And that's exactly what we did. And like I said, nothing was done maliciously. We were not trying to avoid getting a coastal permit. However, when he was confronted, and the only reason he was confronted with this issue is he applied to put in a multiple mailbox. And so, somebody from the planning department came out to look at what he was proposing, they went and counted the spaces and said, huh, you don't have a space seven, but you have a big metal building on it. But again, he was doing what he was told. He said, you have to go to the city to...
What was it for, Daryl?
Oh, for multiple addresses.
Multiple addresses. So, because prior to that, he was delivering the mail to everybody by hand. So, that was the only reason he did that. But like I said, he wasn't trying to avoid getting a permit. I mean, if he's told he has to do it, he does it. But had, had the plan checker told me, you need to get a city letter of approval on this building, I would have done it. And that's the only reason I actually inquired with him, because I know what the protocol is. And that park, Silver City Mobile Home Park, I was wondering how the hell they actually built those things so dang fast? Because I knew that that particular expansion in, in the HCD Title 25, it says that any expansion, you have to get local approvals, because we don't know what the condition of use permit originally allows. Because we've had parks here that have a condition of use permit for 200 spaces, they only build 100, then they built the 100, the other 100 later on. So, if the condition of use permit is still valid, they can do it. If it's not valid anymore, then they have to go to the locals and actually obtain that approval. And that wasn't the case here. We just did exactly what we were told. And so, with that in hand, I can honestly say that none of this was done maliciously. He wasn't trying to avoid getting a permit here, it's just that we followed the protocol. And this is where we're at now. So, now that you have that information, I really would consider, I mean, I'd like for you folks to consider on waiving these requirements. You have information there, and you can ask me anything about Title 25, because I've worked so long in it, it rubbed off on me. So...
Okay. We'll, we'll open it up for further public comment, and we'll probably have you back for further questions.
Okay.
Do we have anybody else that would like to speak to this item? Okay, I'm not seeing anybody jump up, so, Reuben, step back up. Sorry about that, protocol here. Okay, well, questions for the applicant? Jesse?
Okay, yeah, so, Title 25 is, applies to mobile homes and manufactured homes and things like that.
Yes.
Title 24 applies to stick-built structures?
Yeah, and, and if you look in Title 25, whenever a person is doing a stick-built, even if it's in the park, they have to follow Title 24.
Right.
It's in there. You know, so, so they used, Title 25 basically is, is the rules and regulations for a mobile home park, or an RV park, or they call them special occupancy parks now. But if there's any buildings being built in, in that, inside that circumference of that park, they have to follow Title 24.
Correct. Right. So, as I saw the pictures, it looked like it was a mezzanine and not a true second floor. Is that your experience as well?
No, it, basically, it was built within the shell of the building, and they actually provided girders across so they could put the second floor. It's inside the building, but it was designed for that specific purpose. PWS is the, the company, and they build all over the place, and especially in the Central Coast, they're really popular buildings.
Right.
But, yeah.
The, the last question I have, so, I mean, obviously, if you worked for HCD for a lot of years, you understand that, you know, there's going to be times where you have to go outside and get different jurisdictions involved, obviously, like you spoke about. So, in your experience, would, would a stick-built structure require fire approval?
It would, under certain circumstances. And, and Title 25 addresses that, whenever you're building next to another combustible building, because the setbacks vary. It, you know, wood to wood is 10 feet, wood to metal is 6 feet, metal to metal is 3 feet. And that's the way it is.
No, I guess what I was asking was, okay, so, authority having jurisdiction of the fire code would be the local agency?
Mm-hmm.
The local firefighting agency?
Yes.
It wouldn't be HCD in, in any event? I mean, it would be either the, in this case, it would be the city of Morro Bay or Cal Fire, right?
Yes, I mean, they, they could actually come in and review it, and, and plans were submitted for that specific purpose, if they wanted to comment on it. That was, if I'm mistaken, Nancy, didn't we submit plans? And you said that you needed, needed five set of plans, and, because various agencies were going to review?
That's correct.
And so, we did exactly what she said.
Okay. Caesar?
Just a real brief one. It says in the 25 CCR 1443, that the unit is constructed of materials approved for one-hour fire-resistant construction, I'm assuming being a steel building.
Yeah, a steel building would qualify for that, and that's exactly what this is, all, all metal, skin, studs, everything.
Yeah, and we don't know if it has sprinklers in it or not?
Oh, it does not have sprinklers.
Okay. But, how, seems like steel would last pretty well, probably beyond an hour under fire.
Yeah. Well, I mean, let me put it this way. If they were to go in, everything along that road, if they were to go in and pull every mobile home out and put in another mobile home, guess how far they have to send it to the property line? 3 feet.
3 feet, yeah.
And that's combustible.
Yeah.
So, I mean, here we've got a metal building that's, I mean, totally fire-resistant. And I don't know, I, I don't really see the problem there, but however, if a mobile home was to be put in, you know, right next to it, it's only 3 feet, and it's actually, you know, I, I would say that's not a one-hour fire-rated.
Okay.
So...
Joseph? Any questions?
No.
Michael, any questions?
I guess the, the only thing I wanted to make sure is documented, the uses that are going on inside include storage of materials for maintenance?
Yes.
Of the park.
Yeah.
So, we have wood stored, we have potentially, do you have plastics stored?
Well, he has like the, he maintains like ABS parts, I mean, elbows and what have you. He has his gas meters that he keeps in there, because every now and then, one goes bad, so he keeps that in there. He keeps his plumbing parts, you know, for gas and water. Plus, he keeps some of the decorations that he has for the park to decorate it during the holidays.
Does that include fuel for mowers or things like that?
Do you keep all your fuel in there, Daryl?
The waterproof can that they made me buy.
Oh, that, oh, yeah, that's right. I forgot, the plan checker in Riverside forced him to get an approved fire-proof gas can. It had to, had a certain rating that he required, because he does use a weed whacker to maintain the weeds and what have you.
And a shop equipment and things like that?
Yes.
So, you've got sawdust and things?
Yeah, well, yeah, he has a table saw, he has even a metal lathe for retooling various things, because some of the parts that he has in the park are equated, you can't get them anymore, so he'll manufacture some of his parts.
Okay. And then the building, does it have its single-phase, or do you have a three-phase power there?
Uh...
It's a single phase, okay. So, what is the use of this building? What's the designated use?
It's a park maintenance.
I mean, as in, as in, you know, RU or...
Well, I don't know what, what your department would classify it as, to be honest.
That's usually typically classified in the, in the building code. For the fire resistive, for the designated use, so, usually requires, that usually designates, determines the fire resistance.
Exactly. No, I know what you're saying. I, I've been retired since 2007, so I don't have the code books for that now, so I, I don't know what it is presently, so...
Okay. So, typically, commercial, you know, or even auto storage, or storage, I believe, is U, isn't it? Barrett, Jesse?
It might be an S2 commercially.
What would be the fire-resistant rating of a?
Probably less than 10 feet would be a one-hour requirement between the property line and, and the building, if it was an S2, or, or even a U, in a certain, in certain...
So, one-hour rating, typically 5/8 drywall?
Yeah. I think, I think if it's, if it's one-hour fire rating, it's two layers of 5/8s.
On ceiling?
If it's going to be one hour.
One hour.
Yeah. One layer doesn't do it anymore.
Yeah, so, was this building constructed, does, do you have a heating element in it? Or does this, does this have HVAC or FAU to it?
No.
Okay. Does it have insulation?
No. Oh, wait a minute, the ceiling has insulation, right?
The upper story ceiling has it, because they set up the condensator.
Yeah.
And it's got like, I don't know.
Yeah, just the ceiling.
Okay, so, so anyway, okay. I guess we're preempted from, from any fire-resistant standards on this?
So, we, we did have the fire department review it. Fire marshal would take a look at it, and they didn't add any conditions to the project.
Okay. Hmm, okay. I think that's all the questions I have for you. Does anybody else have any further questioning? Okay, thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much, and I appreciate your time.
Okay. Okay, we'll close the public comment, bring it back to the commission. Comments, suggestions? Michael? Or Jesse? Jesse, why don't you go?
Okay, I'll go first. I don't think there's any mal-intent here. I think, I think definitely the applicant thought, working in the, in the spirit of the law, as, you know, as, as our staff has, has indicated. I think the bigger picture problem here is that we maybe need to clarify in the upcoming code adoption, where we want to, what we want to see, what we don't want to see. Clearly, flood, that's a, you know, federally mandated requirement. Obviously, if there was a septic tank, I mean, environmental health, or the building department would be involved. So, I mean, there are some very clear things on what the, the city or the, the city's going to look at. I don't see how fire is not one of those, and it sounds like fire did review this. So, that makes me feel a little bit better, that at least the chief's had a chance to weigh in and, and, you know, require sprinklers if he, if he felt, if he saw it was fit. There is a one-hour requirement, less than 5 feet, non-sprinkle buildings to the property line, for U occupancies in a residential application, even if it's not an S2. An S2 would be a 10-feet, a 10-foot requirement, or a one-hour occupancy separation wall between the property line and the building. So, clearly, some, some things were missed by the plan checker in HCD. So, I see an occupancy analysis of a U, which would be commensurate with a residential garage. So, this looks like was produced in 2014. And I'm not sure the documents that Mr. Reuben provided and were a little outdated. So, we're, we're two or three code cycles past these now. And Title 24 would be applicable anyway, so, you know, these probably don't have the most applicability to what we're doing here. But, so, kind of big picture, I think the big picture is we need to maybe close the loop on this, not necessarily on this project, so...
Yeah? Michael?
Yeah, I agree. I think this is an honest mistake when we're talking to different jurisdictions, and you get conflicting things happening. And I appreciate the owner investing in the mobile home parks. I think they're one of our greatest assets. They, they absolutely help us with all of our city goals on affordable housing, and I think they're actually something in the future that's going to be much more significant for the town. I do have concerns though, and it doesn't, it's not this project, but I would say, I would like to make sure when we look at things that are presented as mobile home parks, we don't end up with the two-story stick-built things at the perimeters that start. I think it's reasonable to assume if I'm going to buy and construct a pretty significant commercial structure next to this mobile home park, whoever's got that window looking at the second story of this thing, I bet didn't think that was going to happen. And, and so, to me, it's, whenever we look at our next version of our codes, we might want to have more care for, for what the unanticipated consequences could be for certain kinds of uses, because that one would, would spook me. But I'm, I'm fine with, with what it is. I think staff did a reasonable job of, of looking and rationalizing the setbacks. And I'm a market, free-market guy. If your insurer comes in there and sees storing wood, storing plastics, gas cans inside a metal building with very small setbacks with very high density, that's going to be reflected in your insurance costs. But I, I do think, long-term, we should look at this idea of trailer parks as a thing and stick-built prefab issues.
Joseph?
Well, but I'm, I'm left with the impression that unless, unless laws change, we really couldn't prevent second-story structures like this in mobile home parks, assuming, you know, assuming they're, they're still following the, the same description as storage buildings and the like. I mean...
Potentially, that's the case. That was part of the issue with the other project that we had on North Main. Part of that discussion happened between all of the competing jurisdictions. And that was one of the issues, what, you know, we brought up, is what happens if we go through the approval process and the second story is denied? And there was the feeling on the part of HCD that we didn't have the authority to do that. Um, again, the issue here is there's no bright line, meaning there's no court case that speaks directly to this, as it relates to coastal development permits. Um, and, uh, and that's what sort of all of the attorneys that were on the, on the call when we were going through this agreed to that. Like, none of them found anything that was directly on point. And so it kind of left us in a little bit of limbo, like, okay, well, what happens? I'm supposed to see how it goes when I bring it forward to planning commission? Uh, yeah, and, um, we had a little bit of that conversation at that meeting. Um, but yeah, until you have something like this that gets litigated, you know, you don't know what the authority is that you have through the coastal development permitting process. The, the argument there is, is, well, we have some authority there, and because we're implementing state policies, you know, coastal act, those types of things, which is how we get in there. But it's clear that we're preempted on the, on the conditional use permit side of things as it relates to construction of a single structure, which was interesting. And there is a good parent case law on that. Um, so that was, again, it was a sort of an illuminating conversation, but it was frustrating nonetheless because we didn't get an answer out the backside of it, so...
I just, just to, not to belabor the point, but I just wish there was some clever aspect of the construction of one of these mobile homes, some ancillary detail that wasn't within the jurisdiction of the Department of Housing and Community, which would then trigger the necessary notice. And I, I simply don't know enough to know what sort of detail would be essential, but not part of their bailiwick, which would require them to say, well, by the way, you should check with the city because they may have some thoughts on it.
Yeah, I mean, literally, this just happened a couple of years ago, and then we had another, I mean, this, this was all, I guess this is actually predates that one.
Third one?
Yeah, I mean, and then we had the park. Um, so, I mean, all these conversations kind of took place, this, you know, the construction of this predated the, the previous one over on North Main. Um, yeah, I have a great answer for that, I, you know, we had the conversation with them, hopefully moving forward, that they're, they're pushing folks in that direction. Um, you know, and, you know, we do have a full-time inspector now that's running around out there, which makes things nicer because you would see things that aren't permitted and know that, what the issue there is. Um, whereas maybe when this was a bill, we had temporary staff on, and part-time inspectors, we had, we were going through a transition at the time.
Susan?
I was ready to make a motion, but I-
Okay.
No? Are we good?
I'd like, yeah, let me, let me have a comment.
Have a comment.
More comments, actually. You're done.
Okay. So Scott, you know, once again, I think it takes, it takes it upon ourselves to at least send out a, you know, postcard to the, uh, the legally registered owners of these laws to state that, that when improvements are made, you know, to, you know, not, not just changing out a, you know, one, um, one unit for another, but they do, they should come into the, to ask the community development office whether, whether permits are required locally.
Yeah, I don't have a problem doing that.
And, um, I think it's probably, you know, a good idea. And, uh, and probably also making, again, once again, contact with HCD and, uh, saying, hey, you know, it's happened again, um, you know?
Yeah.
This one's in the past, that was 2014, so, I mean, so maybe, again, maybe the issue's resolved related to the issue that we had on North Main because they, so they have things they pass out or something with that. Just wouldn't have addressed this concern because it happened in the past.
So, but in our future code, you know, can, can we take jurisdiction on site-built projects without taking jurisdiction on manufactured units? Or, or the-
I'll have to look at it.
Okay.
I mean, I need to do the research, and it's one of my, one of the notes I made when we were talking earlier about it, 'cause I'm not sure what the answer to that is, actually.
'Cause it seems, you know, this, this is kind of, this is the third project I've seen that we've, we've done this, and once again, I don't think there's any, you know, any subterfuge or anything on the applicant, but it just, you know, it would be good to have this run through, you know, fire, you know, local, see ADA, the aspects of ADA, this is a commercial building, you know, Title 24, you know, all of those items, it seems like none of those items were looked at in this building from the, from the state.
It seems like maybe it was, whether we agree with the decisions that were made by the state or not is another question. And I think it has to do with how he, how they categorized the use of the building.
Can I ask one, just theoretical question? If you've got a mobile home, and you've got the proper setbacks, can you leapfrog the structure of the home with a second floor, deck, whatever? Uh, I mean, I, I'm just saying, because it surprised me to see the two-story thing, and then I'm reading all the staff, and it's like, you can do two stories? I don't see any double-height modular homes, but I would imagine at some point, somebody might think of that, especially in a place like, like California. I mean, is an accessory, mobile home with an accessory dwelling in, I don't know. But I'm, if stranger things have happened, and I, I'm just trying to think of, as soon as we start to see two-story things show up in mobile home parks, I wanna, I wanna make sure we aren't, you know, are we, are we, since we're redoing the code, are we, are we thinking through all the two-story, you know, apparitions that can show up for this?
Or, or is, or is it a good idea if they do?
It may be. It may be. Yeah, I mean, there, there are several questions, you know, that are associated with the issue that you raise, um, and most of which I don't have answers to. Um, I, because they're regulated by HCD, if HCD were to allow them, we probably would be preempted from doing anything with that. Now, we do have setback standards and those types of things for fixed buildings, but not for the units themselves. Um, so, it kind of depends. Um, I would imagine, though, that if that were the case, we would be, again, preempted from having much of a say related to that, if that was the, the new model that kind of came out, that now there are two stories. Um, so I don't know, we'd have much, much say over that.
Okay, Jesse?
Yeah, so, I mean, just kind of bringing it full circle again, the, the Department of Housing and Community Development, and all due respect, Rubin, has, has kind of been antagonistic in my, you know, 15 or so years of doing this as well. I, I've worked for counties mainly, so, um, counties have taken jurisdiction from HCD, um, historically, um, in my experience, I can't speak for every county in California, but have, have taken jurisdiction for stick-built, uh, structures, septic systems, environmental health has come down and said, we will look at this septic system. And it occurred to me that, um, since we're the sewer purveyor, um, we have the right to require, it will serve later, so there, there's several avenues we could use to, to, as the water purveyor, the sewer purveyor, the purveyor of, uh, fire protection. Um, we have, we have a little bit more, um, rights here than I think, uh, HCD is conceding, which, um, may be our, our way in, like you were talking about. So, um, I would encourage, uh, staff to look into maybe, uh, closing some of these loopholes in the, in the upcoming code adoption, and using some of those, maybe those, um, other things we do as a city to, to, you know, I don't wanna say, you know, hit them over the head, but carrot on a stick, you know, maybe ask them nicely to come in and, and talk to us about things before things get out of hand. I would have loved to have seen sprinklers in this building, especially it being two-story, uh, especially being less than five feet to the property line, especially being the residence next door. Um, I hope that if there was a fire there, um, everybody gets out safe and, and nobody's hurt, um, but as, uh, this is my personal thing, I'm, I'm a fire sprinkler kind of guy, so, as a, as a personal thing, if the water is available, I would encourage the applicant to at least consider doing that voluntarily, so, that's just my spiel.
Okay. Do we have a, ready for a motion?
I'm ready to give it a try. I move we approve Resolution Number PC 10-19, a resolution of the Morro Bay Planning Commission approving conditional use permit CUP 19-03 and coastal development permit CDP 19-006, approving the maintenance building at 495 Atascadero Road, uh, with the exclusion of Public Works Conditions 2 and 3.
Okay? A second. Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? We good?
I think so.
Okay. Okay, uh, call the, would you call the question, please?
Commissioner Lucas.
Hi.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Barone?
No.
Commissioner Ingraffia?
Yes.
Chair Lur?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Um, it would like, it would be nice to see these before they get built.
Do we have a new, do we have a part of the code about these post-construction?
Okay, so, um, I, yeah, I've got a comment for later, but, uh, at this point, we'll, we'll move on to B2 finally. My apologies. And this is case, uh, case number SEP 19-001, and this is 962 Piney Way in, uh, Morro Bay. Staff?
Hi.
We're waiting to get the presentation up.
Yes, yes. All right, so, thank you, and good evening, commissioners and residents of Morro Bay. Um, the item before you tonight is a request for a sign exception permit SEP 19-001 to allow two freestanding monument signs at St. Timothy's Church on 962 Piney Way, where one monument sign is the maximum per Morro Bay Municipal Code. The applicant is Curtis Bradley. So the zoning for this 10218 square foot lot is R4 outside of the appeals jurisdiction, with a C1 and C2 to the north, GO slash S4 to the south, C1 to the east, and R4 to the west. The fir-, oh, sorry. The existing site has frontages on both Kennedy Way and Piney Way. There is already an existing monument sign on Kennedy Way, Kennedy Way that is to be included as a part of the sign permitting process. The second proposed monument sign would face Piney Way on the southern portion of the lot. The first church building was built, built in 1950, and the second building was added in 1964. Since then, there have been permits for additions and remodels in 2010, 2011, and 2015, and that's outlined in the staff report further. Okay. These are images of the existing and proposed monument signs on the site. Um, when you are looking at one of the signs, the other is not visible. Um, each sign will be six feet tall, including the support posts, and approximately 10 square feet of sign area without the support posts. Oh, we lost it. Sorry.
Is that what you wanted to have up there?
Nope. Some light technical difficulty tonight. Perfect. Thank you very much. Um, okay, so, Section 17.68.110 of Morro Bay's Municipal Code allows for one surface sign or monument sign not to exceed .5 square feet per one linear foot of frontage, or 24 square feet, whichever is less, for signs in residential zones. The combined frontage of the, frontages of the two church buildings on-site is 171 feet, which equates to 85.5 square feet total, so the maximum square footage of the monument sign would be 24 square feet, 'cause it's less than the 85. Um, so the total square footage of both monument signs is less than the allowable 24 square feet, and because the church faces two rights of way, Morro Bay Municipal Code allows for the full authorized sign area on one street and the, and one half the authorized sign area on the other street. So with that said, um, these are the findings for the project. I'm gonna try to go through them quickly. Um, the proposed signs would be consistent with the intent and purpose of the sign chapter. The proposed signs would not constitute detriment to public health, safety, and welfare. The shape, size, and color, and materials, and design, and locations of the proposed signs are compatible and bear harmonious relationship to all signs on the parcel and to the use, as well as to the neighborhood. The proposed signs would be designed as an integral part of the total building. The signs would be visible and legible from normal viewing conditions. The location and design of the proposed signs would not obscure or view, from view, or unduly detract from existing signs, sorry, I missed that one. The proposed signs would not detract or interfere or intrude upon adjacent properties or their occupants. The location and design of the proposed signs would not adversely affect the value or character of the surrounding area. The proposed signs are not at a city entryway. The signs will not be contrary to the purpose of the sign ordinance, will not be material detrimental to the health, safety, comfort, or general welfare of persons residing in the neighborhood, or detrimental or injurious to property improvement in the neighborhood, or to the general welfare of the city, and that any adverse, adverse effects can be prevented with the imposition of project conditions. Okay. So this item was noticed as required in the San Luis Obispo Tribune newspaper on the 10th of May, and the property owners and occupants of record within 500 feet were duly noticed and invited to attend tonight's meeting. Therefore, it is staff's recommendation that the planning commission conditionally approve sign exception permit SEP-001, subject to the findings and conditions of approval outlined in Resolution 11-19. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions for staff?
Well, is it lighted?
It is not lighted.
Okay, it's not even indirectly lighted from in front?
Mm-mm.
Okay, that's all.
Anything? No, I, I don't have any questions either.
Okay.
Okay, at this point, we'll open it up for the applicant for public comment, and typically, we have the applicant come forward.
Do we need the overhead, or what do you have?
Can we get some help with the overhead, please?
He has a presentation, actually. It's a PowerPoint.
Oh, does he? Okay, cool.
Do we, here. So is it PowerPoint, or is it overhead? Okay. Sorry, I'm misinformed. Okay, thanks.
My name is Chris Bradley. I am a sophomore at Morro Bay High School. Um, and I'm here on behalf of St. Timothy's Roman Catholic Church for, uh, to acquire a sign exemption permit. So, uh, St. Timothy's Hall has like many, has many uses, uh, in the community. Uh, some of the uses, uh, that it's been used for is, uh, English has a second language group, Alcoholics Anonymous, the Morro Bay Chamber of Commerce. Uh, we have a local wood carving group there, along with a local quilt-making group. We have a group who have, like, family members with drug and alcohol, uh, problems. Uh, we also have monthly community dinners there, where we give, uh, free soup dinners. Um, well, uh, it's also been used by the Coast Guard for trainings, along with, uh, the Fire Department, who's used the, the facility. Um, it's also, uh, been used by the Girl Scout Brownies, uh, by local, uh, Corals, and, uh, it's used by the Rotary, and it was also used, uh, by the city for Amgen. So, uh, that's the local, uh, how appears, um, the, that, how Piney Way appears currently with no signage, so when, uh, a person on a, person who's driving by can't find out where the, the church is. Uh, that's another, uh, view of what it looks like. And the proposing sign is gonna be behind that brick wall that's, uh, behind, that's on the property. Um, so, also in the pamphlet is another map of where the proposed sign and the existing sign currently is. Uh, and the proposed sign is going to be, uh, close enough to be viewable, uh, to the, to a car going by, but not as a distraction. to a car going by, but not as a distraction. And also have an assembly of how this sign is going to be constructed. So, there's six granite tiles on it, and there's a four-by-four in the middle, and held by two four-by-fours on top, along with-- not by two, four-by-fours along the side, and just two copper heads on top. And then, to provide more integrity, there's going to be two-by-sixes that'll be added on to the back of the sign. And there's also another view of how the sign will look. And I have as an example for you to see, in my manufacturing and design class, I had learned how to use these CAD programs and create a sign, but we also were able to laser cut a piece of acrylic. So, here I have an example of this going to be used for painting the granite, easier as a stencil.
Great.
And there's another orthographic view of the sign. And you can see that the sign is going to be 108 inches long, but three feet will be into the ground, making a total viewable height of six feet. And at this time, I'm requesting the Morro Bay Planning Commission to grant the sign exemption permit as proposed by St. Timothy's Church. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have anybody else that would wish to speak to this item?
I think I ought to. First of all, I want to thank the commission, but I also want to thank Curtis, and that as an Eagle Scout project, that he was willing to do this. He's put an enormous amount of time in it, and I couldn't do the work that he's doing. But that's a generational gap, I think.
Yeah.
But, as you well know, that St. Timothy's tries to be an integral part of Morro Bay, and we have lots of people who want to use our facilities, and we are generally very generous in that. But they often do not know where the hall is, or even the church. So, we needed a sign in the front, so we'd know where the church is, but we also need a sign on Piney Way, so they know that this is also part of the church property. So, it's being practical. Yes, it helps our parishioners, but it also helps the general public, as you can see from all the organizations that have used it and are using it. So, I think this is-- I think it's also beneficial for the town, because it makes it more convenient for people in town to know where St. Timothy's is and where they're actually going. So, I think it also beautifies St. Timothy's, and I think it's attractive to the town. But I have a further issue that I would like to bring up to you. We have done a lot for the town, St. Timothy's, or at least I feel so, and we've spent a lot of money in my time here, my over 20 years here at St. Timothy's. We have spent a lot of money to-- on various projects to beautify the campus, and which I think has also added to the attractiveness of the town. So, I would like to ask you if you could in some way lessen the cost of this project, so that we are not paying the full rate for the-- as a-- I'm asking that as a gesture of goodwill from the Piney Commission. So, I know it might be unusual, but it's because we really serve the public, and a variety of ways is the only reason that I'm asking for that. We have never asked it before from the Piney Commission in all of renovations that we have done. So, but I am asking it this time as part of the request.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have anybody else that would wish to speak to this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll-- do we have any questions for the applicant? Any wish? Susan, did you have--
Okay, I just had one question, just on placement of the sign. You know, as you're coming from Harbor, would you get better visibility if you placed it on the other side of the driveway, and have you looked at that as far as visibility for vehicular traffic?
On the other side of the barrier?
On the other side of the entrance, on the other side of the driveway. Because as you're approaching the turn, your line of sight is going to be following the turn, and so what I'm just wondering about is it-- are you going to lose sight of it, because you're not going to be looking, you're going to be looking more towards as you're following the turn? So, if it was on the other side of the approach, the entry, would it have more visibility?
Um, it's--
Okay, yeah.
We looked at that.
Okay.
And we didn't find that there was a place on the property we could put it. We'd have to put it outside on what is technically town property. So, we could do it if the Planning Commission thought we should do it, and you would agree to that placement. But we chose to put it on the property as opposed to putting it outside the property.
So, that would be-- that would require an encroachment permit?
Yeah.
For our city property?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, it seemed easier just to keep it that way.
Okay, great. Thank you. That was a wonderful presentation. Okay, we'll bring it back to the commission, then. Jesse, go ahead.
Oh, I just have a question for staff, real quick. The fee waiver process, Scott, is that something that's done, or do we have any say into that? I mean, I imagine it's a council decision anyway, but do we have-- if we had a recommendation, would that look favorably upon them?
Certainly, the Planning Commission could make a recommendation related to that, and we could tee something up and take it to council. But yeah, the Planning Commission staff, we don't have authority to waive fees. The City Council is the only one that has the authority to do that.
But I imagine there is a process, and it's fairly well-defined, and you would be willing to walk the pairs through, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And could we, Scott, if could we condition the project to see if it has better visibility? If the preferential location of the sign, could we approve it with a condition that it be placed on either side of the driveway, or would we need to nail that down?
The bigger issue is the exception itself. If they would like to place it in the other location on the other side, that's fine. I don't know if there's-- it sounded like maybe there was an issue with that. If it's out in the right of way, then it's more complicated, because you have to go through an encroachment permit process, and that's more staff time, and then more fee waivers, and all those types of things, because there are costs associated with that. So, if it could be placed behind the wall on that side, then I don't think it's an issue, and from a staff standpoint, we would just process the modification.
Wasn't the little yellow posted sign was kind of to the front of the wall, and behind that wall is where the new sign would be, correct? I feel like the visibility was fine. You know, as you're-- so, as you're driving around on Piney, you first see the entrance to Albertson's, and then it's kind of a logical thing to see the sign next, you know, as you're going to make a right turn into that driveway. And if you're coming the other way, then I do think you're going to be seeing that to make your left turn. So, I think the placement is quite reasonable.
Okay.
Actually, I can actually comment. When we first moved here, I remember looking at the driveway and not being quite certain that was the proper entrance into the church grounds, with the point being, you look. So, I think wherever the sign is placed, people are uncertain they will look for a sign and find it.
Sure. Scott, what do you ballpark think the fees might be on this type of project that we would be recommending waived if we went that route?
It's roughly $1,200.
$1,200, okay.
And trust me, we're losing money.
Yeah.
It takes almost two grand to get something to a hearing in front of you.
Okay.
Sort of makes me feel like, again, our sign ordinance, which I've long battled with, it's just so awkward and silly. I mean, that's a large building with multiple entrances and multiple frontages, and it only makes sense that you would have signage to direct people into that building from both sides. I mean--
Yeah, the draft sign ordinance doesn't have the same issues, and staff is granted some authority to make some exceptions through the staff process versus having to go to the Planning Commission. Our current code, as you're well aware, is 30-something years old and outdated, antiquated, and has some interesting things in it, so.
We're sorry.
Okay, do I have any further comments or discussion?
Yeah, I, for one, am personally familiar with the generosity of the church and pastor. I think this is a wonderful opportunity for the community to acknowledge that generosity, and in some small measure, repay that generosity. So, despite the costs that I'm hearing associated with it, I would like us to take that into consideration and do something generous. I'd also like to say, it was an excellent presentation. I only wish most of the applicants before us could have an absolutely fine presentation. And in view of the fact that the sign's less than its maximum, and it's certainly not in a residential area, I see absolutely no problem with the direction, and I think we should do something about the cost.
Michael?
Yes, wanted to also say, I really appreciate St. Tim's going well beyond maintaining the campus. That last renovation was spectacular, and the whole landscape package that went with the refurbishing of the building was really exceptional. And you don't necessarily see the commercial people coming up to that level of care. We have some exceptional commercial projects in town, but it's rare to see somebody take the effort as far as you did with that, and I really appreciate that. And I do think this is something, as somebody who drives up Piney sometimes, it is hard to understand what's that driveway for. So, I think it's great, and the presentation was spectacular. You should get a medal instead of a badge
Well, I would like to see us maybe add that recommendation to council to consider reducing fees, but also, you know, put it out there to the public. Again, this is-- there's a lot of folks who have been using, and maybe we can pass a bucket, you know, make our donations, so. It's a thought.
Okay. You know, wonderful presentation, I appreciate that, and you should be commended, and I wish my CAD skills were up to yours. So, okay, do we have a motion?
I'll try and make a motion here. I move that we grant the sign exception permit SEP 19-001. The sign exception permit approval requests to allow two freestanding monument signs, where one monument sign is the maximum. And I do recommend we forward a favorable recommendation for granting a fee waiver to the City Council.
I'll second.
Willow?
And adopt the Resolution 11-19. Did you say that?
I didn't. And adopt Resolution 11-19.
Great, thank you, Willow.
I'll still second it.
Still second. Discussion on-- Okay, please call the question.
Okay. Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Stewart?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ingoffia?
Aye.
Chair Lur?
Yes, please.
Motion passes, sorry, 5-0.
Oh, no, and thank you for all the work you've done for the community, and once again, I'll second the notion. You know, I watched the progress of the renovation on the building, and you kept it true to its character, which I really appreciated. And so, thank you. Okay, moving on, we have new business. Part of new business, Scott, I'm not sure if it's now, or if I should-- but we keep coming across these projects where we have negligent permitting, and maybe you could, you know, alludiate me on a few things, where I have a friend who's, you know, from Portland, and they have a-- in our municipal code, they-- if they have to do-- file a stop work for somebody not coming in for a permit, there's a $10,000 fine for that. Is that applicable under California laws? Can we do that?
So, yeah, so the city can come up with that. We have the, you know, the standard thing where we can double your building permit fees if you're, you know, if you're doing construction without a permit. We-- again, you've heard me say this many times, our current fee structure, which relates to, like, coastal development permits and those types of things, is fairly ineffective, because the fee is really low. You know, the violation issued with Section is found in 1.03 of the Municipal Code, and, you know, it makes us warn you, give you an opportunity to correct, and then we can start fining you. It's $100, then two, then five, and at some point, we'd probably just take you to court to get a remedy at that point, you know, and we have to get a decision by council for that. Other cities do have more fees, and more penalty fees, and larger penalty fees for different violations, which is something the city would have to take under, you know, consideration.
Because we have, you know, we just have the issue with Panorama. You know, we've, you know, in my neighborhood, I see, you know, in driving around, I, you know, I see people coming in on the weekend, and, you know, and Friday night to Monday morning, they're working like beavers, you know, and then close down for the week, so they, you know, and then come back the next weekend and stuff. And so, and we've seen quite a few projects come forward that have been the result of not having previous permits pulled on them and stuff. So, I'd just like to see that as a-- to see if we can investigate that, or if it's feasible, or what's--
We could certainly have a discussion about it. I mean, I think, you know, I do owe a discussion back before the Planning Commission in relation to the code update for the building code. I'm going to kind of wait until we're a little bit further along into summer before we have that conversation, but I was going to bring the Fire Marshal with me and talk about some of the local amendments that we do, and, I mean, you know, hopefully on a meeting where we don't have a whole bunch of stuff, but I mean, so you can have a conversation about other things you might have. You know, we have a building inspector on the commission now, and so they might have interesting ideas from the county. So, yeah, I mean, I always like to get input where I can to improve the policies that we have, and that's part of that discussion could be, what do we do with things like that? Again, we just have the standard requirement in our codes and our fee schedule that allows us to charge double the permit fees. And we do that sometimes, sometimes not, just depending on what the circumstance, if it was malicious, or, you know, whatnot. I mean, we do use discretion.
Yeah, you know, personally, I'd like to see it as a discretionary thing, so if somebody just, you know, if it's borderline that they, you know, and a minor issue, not to come down with a hammer, but have it, you know, have it as, you know, out there. You know, personally, I think we need some incentive, you know, to get more compliance. And as the codes are getting stricter and stricter, you know, I'm seeing more and more, you know, middle-of-the-night work.
There was an interesting story in today's LA Times, and it related to a house in Glendale that was demolished without a permit. It could apply equally to construction projects that have several stages, and if you do something without a permit, or you have your permit canceled, you might be precluded for three to five years from applying for a new permit, and that could be a significant incentive.
Yeah, I think, just to follow up on Commissioner Lur's comments, you know, I've been doing some continuing ed based on the new code adaptation, and the number of residential addition things that are triggered now, in terms of HVAC inspections and things like that, are mind-boggling compared to what they used to be. So, there is no incentive to get those things done without a disincentive to not have them done. So, I really think we've got to tighten up on that, because we'll miss the intent of what some of those codes are, which is life safety, you know, use of resources in a wise way, and, you know, safeguarding the construction for your neighbors. You know, that's what we miss when we don't have proper permits, that life safety thing. That's why so much of the comments are about sprinklers and things like that. Yeah, it's building code check-off things, but when these people bring these things forward without the proper permits, they-- forward without the proper permits, they could be jeopardizing all sorts of things around them.
Okay, and, okay, so unfinished business? We have none. Planning Commissioner's comments and future agenda items? I think we were working on that one. And Jesse?
I would like to add an agenda item to really delve into this HCD thing, and I would like to speak to the city attorney if he has time to meet with us on that agenda item and see where their perspective is on why we couldn't specify Title 24 applicable structures to be under the jurisdiction of the city. I think that's a very minor thing. We don't, you know, I agree with Ruben, we don't want to take the whole park, we don't want to do those maintenance inspections. But we do want to have control over the things that they're building that they don't normally do, and, you know, I'm a plans examiner now, so I'm not a building inspector. But, so I mean, as the HCD inspectors are very good at inspecting mobile homes and connections too, but they're not so good at sometimes at doing commercial buildings and things like that. So I think we really are doing ourselves a disservice, doing our community a disservice if we're not, if we're not taking the bull by the horns there, making sure we're getting all the right things there, so. Especially, I can put my Richard Sodowsky hat on, but I mean, what are we doing to the sewer plant? What are we doing to the infrastructure? I mean, is, are we capable of, I mean, if they're building something with, you know, that requires an oil separator, and we're just taking that directly to the sewer plant, I mean, we could be ruined on our own $126 million sewer plant with oil because we didn't ask to see some of these things, so anyway.
Yeah, I second that emotion there, too. I'm getting nods across.
I'll put it on the list, yeah, sure.
Okay. You know, and these things that are coming up, I think, you know, seeing as we're doing our update on our GP and LCP, you know, I think those are things that now is the time, if we can, to see if we can insert them. So, so community development directors or comments? I don't have anything. Okay. With that big sigh, we'll have adjournment to the next regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting at the Veterans Memorial Building at 209 Sur Street on June 4th, 2019 at 6:00 PM. Thank you, everybody.